I call to order this meeting of the Coeeta County Board of Education Agenda 8:40, 6:30 PM, June the 10th, 2025. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes six to zero. Dr. Horton, recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This time I'll call on Public Information Officer Dean Jackson to bring us our one and only very special recognition this evening. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Dr. Horton. That is correct. We just have one recognition tonight, but it's a big one, and it is our state champion baseball. And I'm going to call on Noonan High School Principal Jamie Glover to introduce Coach Mark Gilmore, excuse me, number of other coaching in Noonan High School staff, and most importantly, our state 5A champs, Noonan Cougars.
Thank you, Dean. Members of the board, Dr. Horton, Dr. Kemp. Again, I'm Jamie Glover, Principal Noonan High School, and I have the privilege tonight of introducing you to Coach Gilmore. I did have a conversation with him about keeping it short. I'm not sure that's going to work out. But just for me, taking over as principal in March, I've watched these guys for a couple of years. This team is incredible in their faith, for one, their resiliency to continue to push even in the face of some adversity through the season when Coach Gilmore decided to take a few days off for his issues. But he's back full force, and we appreciate him. So without further ado, I introduce you Coach Mark Gilmore, 2025 State Championship Head Baseball Coach.
Thank you, Mr. Glover, Dr. Horton, and our board. At this time, I'd like to call up our players as members of the 2025 5A State Championship. We have Brian Moore, John Matthews, Carson Shaner, Brooks Owens, Ben Roche, Brody Campbell, Caden Lamb, Reed Davis, Lucas Lee, Ben Edge, Nathan Dewberry, Mason Dodds, Madden Clark, Braden Williamson, 2025 Georgia State Player of the Year, Dax Kilby, Cole Gilmore, Jaden Hill, Gordon Samdeman, Peyton Bass, and Colton Whitman. I'd also like to acknowledge the gentlemen who have been with me through the journey, when I wasn't there, when I am there. They're the backbone of our program, and I want to make sure that they're recognized. We have Assistant Coach Matt Nash, Matthew Ross, Joseph Lucas, Brian Morgan, Braden Griner, and Richard Warren. We can't begin to thank our staff, our faculty, our administration, our fans, our community, the Board of Education, for the support that we have throughout the playoffs. If you came to a game in the playoffs, our attendance skyrocketed. I told the boys throughout the playoffs that we have plenty of room on the wagon. If anybody wants to join on, go ahead and come on. But we are thankful for the support, and, you know, I know that these guys did our school system, Noonan High School, and our baseball program proud, bringing a championship back to our county. Thank you.
And while the picture-taking is going on, I want to add my congratulations. I was at those last two games, and first one was really exciting. Thank goodness the second one, y'all made it a little less eventful. But it was a little strange the way it ended, but hey, we'll take it, you know? I think we were going there anyway. So congratulations. Enjoy the summer. Enjoy whatever's next. And I know y'all play in ball, and let's do it again next year. Congratulations. Congratulations.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes six to zero. Do I have a motion to approve the call minutes of May 20th, 2025? Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes six to zero. And one more. Do I have a motion to approve the call minutes of May 23rd, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes six to zero. Dr. Horton, action items, group one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first item that I have for you tonight in group one is to approve the 2526 GSBA Assembly Solutions Module Subscription Renewal. Assembly Solutions is an online service that allows for public posting of policies, laws, our strategic plan, and our meeting documents. Also allows alignment of these important documents. I recommend approval of the Module Subscription and Policy Maintenance Service in total amount of $19,520. Recommend approval.
The superintendent has recommended approval of purchase of the Assembly Solutions, an online service that allows for public posting of our policies, laws, strategic plans, meeting documents, et cetera. Total cost is $19,520. Do I have a motion to approve? Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes six to zero.
The next item I have for you in group one is to approve ESPOSS 7 Resolution and Referendum. Approval was requested of the referendum resolution calling for SPOSS 7 to be placed on the November 4th, 2025 election ballot. Current SPOSS 6 is projected to expire early during the first quarter of 2026. Board members, if you approve this resolution, it will then be forwarded to the Board of Elections, hopefully to get on their June 23rd agenda. Mr. Chair, I recommend approval.
The superintendent has recommended approval of the referendum resolution calling for SPOSS 7 to be placed on the November 4th, 2025 election ballot. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes six to zero.
Call on Mr. Chapman to bring you the tentative FY26 budget. Mr. Chapman.
We've held our required hearings. Recommend that the Coweta County School System, Board of Education, tentatively adopt the fiscal year 2026 budget, $395,505,531, which includes a general fund budget of $316,140,493. Also includes approval of the salary schedules used to compile the budget. This tentative approval includes all federal programs such as Title I and IDEA.
Mr. Chair, I recommend approval.
Superintendent has recommended the approval for the FY26 budget of $395,505,531, which includes a general fund budget of $316,140,493, and also includes the salary schedules that were used to compile the budget, and it does include the federal programs such as Title I and IDEA. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes six to zero.
Mr. Horton, may I make one comment? We will have a call meeting in two weeks on the 24th at 6:30 for the formal adoption of the budget.
And if I'm not mistaken, that's the procedure required by state law?
Yes, sir. And it'll be advertised once between now and the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
It'll be the 24th at 6:30. Yes, ma'am. Mr. Chair, the next item I have for you in group one doesn't require any action, but it is a review of board norms. The GSBA exemplary board application requires an agenda to be included in that application that reflects an annual board meeting where the board norms and protocols were reviewed. So I'm not sure if anyone has any questions, any comments on the board norms. These were adopted by us several years ago, and we just need to review them for the GSBA exemplary board application. These norms do cover communication between the superintendent and the board, communication with other staff members. It covers chain of command, our governance roles and responsibilities, and our decision-making processes. Nothing else to add other than that we have reviewed them.
And if there's no discussion on the boards, we do not have to take a vote, we'll move on to the next item. Okay.
All right, moving on to the next item. It's to approve school nutrition surplus items. Approval is requested to declare the listed school nutrition items as surplus. Mr. Chair, I recommend approval per board policy.
Superintendent has recommended approval of the surplus school nutrition items. The list was provided. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes six to zero.
The next item I have for you in group one is to approve a proposal from Noonan Crossing Elementary for the installation of a walking track. Noonan Crossing Elementary School requests approval for the installation of a walking track for the school. Materials and installation of the track will be donated by Brent Scarborough and Company. Requirements of board policy, FEAE, have been met. Board members, I'll just note my appreciation for Mr. Scarborough and his company for what they do for our school system. Recommend approval.
Superintendent has recommended approval of a walking track to be donated by Brent Scarborough and Company, and I'll add my thank you to Mr. Scarborough and the company also. But approval of a walking track for Noonan Crossing Elementary, walking track, excuse me, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes six to zero.
The last item I have for you in group one is to request approval for an intergovernmental agreement between the Coweta County and the Coweta County School System for paving at Cannongate Elementary School. Approval was requested for an intergovernmental agreement between Coweta County and the Coweta County School System for milling, paving, and striping at Cannongate Elementary School. Estimated project cost is $226,949.47. A copy of the intergovernmental agreement is attached. Board members, you may recall that from time to time, we'll enter into these such agreements with the county in order to keep costs down as we do projects like this typically over the summertime. So I recommend approval.
The superintendent has recommended approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the Coeeta County and the Coeeta County School System for milling, paving, and striping at Cannongate Elementary in the estimated cost of $226,949.47. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes six to zero. Action items, group two with bids. Dr. Horton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first item I have for you in group two is to approve a proposal to construct a hitting facility at the Northgate High School softball field. Approval was requested for a proposal to construct a covered hitting facility for the softball field at Northgate High School. Scope of work consists of removing the existing batting cages and concrete slabs, constructing a new canopy structure slab and batting cages. Torrance Construction Company submitted the high-scoring proposal for this project with a total score of 98 points and a total bid of $384,674. The scorecard and bid tabulation sheet are attached. Mr. Chair, I recommend approval.
Superintendent has recommended approval of a proposal to construct a covered hitting facility for the softball field at Northgate High School. The winning bid was Torrance Construction Company for a total price of $384,674. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I have a quick question.
Okay.
What's the timeframe on that?
I'm not sure about the end of the timeframe because it's dependent on weather and any unforeseen conditions they may run into. If this were to be approved tonight, I would assume Mr. Torrance will get started, Mr. Cheek, as quickly as he possibly can. Right. Thank you, Mr. Cheek.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes six to zero. Action items, group three.
I got one more.
Oh, you got one more?
Yes, sir.
I jumped ahead, sorry.
The last item I have for you in group two is to approve a proposal to construct new rooms in the central office facility. Approval was requested for a proposal to modify the central office records room to create three new offices and a new conference room. Torrance Construction Company submitted the high-scoring proposal for this project with a total score of 99 points and a total bid of $160,107. The scorecard and bid tabulation sheet are attached. Board members, one thing I do want to mention, we're not constructing new rooms because we're adding three staff members. We have staff members that are currently housed in schools that, because we need space in the schools, we're wanting to bring them back here towards. The records room that we're referring to will be right across the hall. When you walk out this door here, it's on the left. So just a modification there. So I recommend approval.
The superintendent has recommended approval to modify the central office records room into three new offices and a conference room. Again, Torrance Construction was the winning bid of a total amount of $160,107. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Any discussion? Ms. Dees.
They typically are around 10 by 10, 10 by 12.
Okay. So on this, across the hallway, three offices.
Yep. If you were to go down the hall on your left, you'll see pretty much a mirror image. There are three separate rooms on the left side, and then there will be a conference room across the hall from there.
I couldn't see that in my head, but I got that.
Yep.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes six to zero. So now we're ready for action items, group three trips.
All right. Call on Dr. Kemp, Director of Administrative Services, to bring you your trip tonight. Dr. Kemp?
Thank you, Dr. Horton. The principal of East Coeeta High School requested permission for the chorus and the thespian society to travel to Los Angeles, California, March the 12th through the 16th, 2026. They will be visiting sites related to music and theater. Students will miss one day of school. There will be no cost to the school system. Recommend approval.
The superintendent has recommended approval for East Coeeta High School group to travel to Los Angeles to experience music and theater sites there in Los Angeles. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes six to zero. Superintendent, report.
All right. Call on Mr. Chapman once again to bring you your board report and sales tax. Mr. Chapman?
Financial report. We were over budget approximately $265,000 for the month of May. Cumulatively, we're about $1.2 million under budget, and we'll be in good shape for the end of the year. Sales tax, good collections, just under $3.5 million. Year over year, we're down less than half a percent, so basically flat.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Call on Dr. Kemp once again to bring your staff and student attendance and your board goal report. Dr. Kemp?
Thank you again, Dr. Horton. For the ninth attendance reporting period, the staff with the highest attendance was Northside Elementary School. Highest student attendance for program area, Maggie Brown. Highest student attendance for elementary school, Northside Elementary. Highest student attendance for middle school, Arnold Middle School, and the highest student attendance for high school, Home of the Indians, East Coeeta High School.
It's been a while. It's been a while.
For this month's board goal report, I would like to call your attention to our administrative workshop that was held on June the 2nd and June the 3rd for all school and central office administrators. Administrators participated in a two-day professional learning workshop titled Visible Leadership for Visible Learning. The workshop focused on equipping leaders with visual tools and strategies to enhance school improvement efforts, leadership clarity, and instructional support. Key topics included building and sustaining high expectations for both staff and students, fostering through an open and intentional dialogue, and developing evaluative thinking as part of decision-making process. Leaders discussed strategies to help move teachers from good to great by providing meaningful feedback and promoting continuous professional growth. Overall, the workshop was highly engaging and well-received, providing school and district leaders with practical tools and shared language to guide leadership practices, instructional support, and school improvement efforts across our school system.
Board members, we had a really good couple of days. I'm proud of our curriculum team for putting a great workshop together for our system leaders. And then probably my favorite part is the second half of the second day. We got to go out into the community and distribute literacy bags and books to people out in our community. So it was a lot of fun and a very engaging workshop. Next thing I have for you, facilities and construction report. You can see Noonan High School BP 1 and 2 are 100% paid out. Still working on some HVAC issues and door hardware issues on BP 3, so we haven't made the final payment there. Works underway on the Northgate High School tennis court repairs. An additional front strains have been installed. Check set drawings for Central Educational Center addition renovations and modifications are being finalized. They do have a check set meeting scheduled for later this week and hope to begin construction late summer of 2025. Arnold kitchen re-roof, work is actually scheduled to begin out there yesterday. I'm not sure if they got going with the weather or not, but we'll get that one done between now and the start of school. Shield projects at our remaining middle schools are underway, progressing very nicely. I was actually pleasantly surprised at the amount of work that we got done before school got out on those. Sewer upgrades at East Side and Arnco Sergeant are underway. Demolition's complete on the sewer line at both locations, and replacement of interior sewer lines is completed at East Side, and the slab has been repoured. Installation of the new sewer line is underway now at Arnco Sergeant. We do anticipate that those will be completed prior to the start of school. Works complete on renovations of the field at Northgate High School. Renovations at East Coeeta are underway. I think they're progressing nicely. The equipment had moved outside the fence yesterday, so that's a good sign. And then work at Noonan High is scheduled to begin in a couple of weeks. Just a reminder, board members, that the work on those turf fields is at no cost to the school system. Floor covering work underway at Noonan, East Side, and Arnco. Will begin at Arnco actually later this week. You heard about the central office modifications tonight, also the Northgate Hitting Facility, Cannongate paving. And then we're moving a mobile classroom to Western to allow the conversion of an existing mobile classroom and a room within the school to be used for some additional classrooms out there. And then the last item there you can see is our summer listing of painting and floor covering that we'll do in several schools throughout the district. So a busy summer for Mr. Cheek, Ms. Ingram. They've got a great plan, and we look forward to having everything tidied up and ready to go by the start of the 2526 school year. Board members, the last item I have for you tonight is to bring you Thomas Crossroads Elementary Audit Findings. On February the 11th, 2025, an allegation of fraud at Thomas Crossroads Elementary School was made by a member of the public during a public hearing of the Coweta County Board of Education. As required by policy DIE, this allegation was investigated. The investigation determined that there was no fraud at Thomas Crossroads Elementary School. Those findings are attached. Board members, the auditor had a conflict tonight, also has a conflict in July. So the plan is for the auditor to come and present more in-depth findings to you at the August board meeting. However, I wanted to bring this to you as soon as we had it because I know it has been a subject that you've been paying attention to, that you've wanted to know more about and want to know the progress on the audit. So those results are attached for you. We'll say that this audit costs $16,000. Invoice is also attached there for you. Mr. Latimer, Mr. Chapman, I don't know if you want to speak too. Very good audit. To go back for over two years and to find basically nothing speaks to the work that Andy Mastin, the bookkeeper at Thomas Crossroads, had done for us. Mr. Latimer?
All right. Just very quickly, good evening, board members. I just want to tell you that the audit was very in-depth. So to go back for a period of two, a little over two years, and test every single transaction is quite a feat, and we came out on top. Andy Mastin is a spectacular bookkeeper and has done an excellent job here in the school system. Really and truly, there were no findings to even report. There were a couple of deficiencies noted that were not even worth mentioning because I think there were three invoices that they looked at that I think had dates a little bit wrong on there, and I think one deposit that was one day late. But if you're thinking about all the transactions that they tested during that period of time, spectacular results.
Thank you, Mr. Latimer. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Horton. At this time, we always set aside 45 minutes for public comments. I know we're a little bit early tonight on that. We had one gentleman signed up who was unable to make it to speak at the May meeting because of our online incident that happened. Dr. Matt Boyd, Dr. Boyd, I do not see anyone in the audience. With that said, we will move on to board comments. Do I have any board comments tonight?
Chairman Glover, I do. Last week, we had a busy week. We were in Savannah at the GSBA conference. Went down on Wednesday. We were there Thursday and Friday taking care of some training. Prior to that, on Tuesday, Chairman Glover, Vice Chairman DeBose, and myself, we were invited and went down and sat in on a little better than a half a day at the Gazero Conference down in Columbus. That's Georgia School Resource Officers, Educators. Very informative conference down there. Happy to say that we had 16 of our RSOs in attendance on Monday. I'm not sure about the attendance on Tuesday. I'm assuming there were a few more. Dr. Horton was down on Tuesday. But it was probably, to me, from a school safety standpoint, one of the most informative conferences that I've been to. We heard some really good speakers, heard a good presentation, and references to that presentation on the situation at Appalachian High School last year, and some of the things that they did up there. Very impressed with the whole situation, all the speakers. And I know school resource officers have been in the news a lot here lately. So I just want to let you know that right now there are no plans in Coeeta County, and I don't want to speak out of turn, but there's no plans currently to change any of the situations that we have in Coeeta County. So my hat's off to the guys in here. Some of them are part of that school resource officer group. See them in and around the schools, and happy to see a lot of our current resource officers in and around, and a couple retired resource officers came back. So very positive situation all the way around. I know Danielle Russell, who is, I know I'm going to get this title wrong, she's the president of the Georgia Gazero Association. She's here. So my hat's off to her and what she did to being in charge of all that and putting all that together. So really good, really good week for us from a training standpoint and information.
Are there any other comments? I do want to make one myself, and Dr. Horton and Mr. Robertson kind of stole a little bit of my thunder, but want to take a moment to acknowledge all of the work that is going on over the summer. And just because the students are not in school doesn't mean that the work to improve the school system is not going on. I know many teachers are attending conferences and workshops around the country to improve their skills. Some are actually presenting at these conferences and workshops because they're leaders in their field and they're experts in their field. Last week is Dr. Horton and
Last week, as Dr. Horton and mentioned, the, or I think Dr. Kemp mentioned, the school level administrator spent two days over at the Nixon Center. We were there for the, the first part of the morning in an administrative workshop that included community service, where books were given out to the kids around the country. Dr. Horton mentioned that, and that is, that was great. And it was great to have all the administrators in one place at one time and to, to see them there. And as Mr. Robertson just mentioned, oh, one thing else on teachers. I know a lot last week met in, I think, this very room, the pictures look like, and at their schools, working on school, school improvement plans. They were putting those together. They'd come in over the summer. And as Mr. Robertson mentioned, our law enforcement friends were SROs. Were getting in on the training also down in Columbus, taking classes and hearing from experts in school safety. And I will add also, besides, I think we had 16 SROs there. Our sheriff, Mr. Lynn Wood, was there on, on Monday, Monday also. But, so on behalf of the board, I just want to thank everyone for the work and the time you're putting in to make our school system better over the summer. Now, I hope you do spend some time on you. Go to the lake, go to the beach, go to the mountains, heck, do all three. But I hope you enjoy your summer. Take some time to, to rest and recharge and spend some time with your friends and family. And I saw on the boards while we were eating dinner tonight, I think the first start of the next school year is coming up just a little over a month from now. It's hard to believe. And then teachers' planning days start, they're toward the end of July. So thank you for everything that you do over the summer. It is not a, you know, three-month vacation as some would believe. So thank you, and that's all I have. Any additional comments?
Do I have a motion to enter into executive session to discuss personnel, real estate, and potential litigation?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes six to zero.